Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is February 7th, 2024. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance. For the invocation, I'd like to have a moment of silence for our first responders and her men and women of all this branches in our armed services, for them to be safe, give them the capabilities to serve in their capacity, but more importantly, make sure they come home safe to their families at the end of their tour duty. Thank you very much. Please remain standing for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, united states, liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor, before I call the roll, I would like to announce that Councilmember Cosin has asked to be excused, and I will mark her so. And Councilmember Carr is participating remotely. Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers Carr?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Long?
Shepherd?
Here.
Steinke?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
Seven present, one excused.
Thank you very much. Item five is changes to the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda, or do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Is there any other discussion? See none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr? Carr? Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long? Shepherd?
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item six is recognitions and achievements. Six A is community recognition award. Mr. City Manager.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight's community recognition award goes to Brittany Bowman. I'm pleased to present today's community recognition award to Cape Coral's very own Brittany Bowman, who recently took first place in a statewide mixology competition held in Cape Coral. The Rivy Gin and Redwood Empire Whiskey Bartender Competition brought together competitors from across Florida with their personally curated craft cocktails. Brittany presented what she calls the Sunshine Bird, comprising Rivy Grapefruit Gin, Acid-Adjusted Blood Orange, Black Mangrove Honey, Yuzu, Duck Egg Foam with Lemon, and Rosemary Simple Syrup, served on to the judges atop half a flip-flop. Brittany has contributed to Cape Coral's local craft cocktail scene for nearly two decades, having served at Nevermind, Nice Guys, and is now at Sage on 47th. She has been described as one of the most creative minds in mixology, wielding the ability to see flavors before tasting them. Thank you, Brittany, for contributing to Cape Coral's expanding reputation as one of the best places for hospitality and culture.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Congratulations, Brittany, on your award and your achievement. Next item is item seven, approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion regarding the minutes from the regular meeting of January 24th, 2024?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is citizens' input time. A maximum of 60 minutes is set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record, and also make sure that you address city council as a collective body and not an individual. Go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Lori Lehman.
Make sure you speak into the mic.
My name is Lori Lehman. I live in District Two and have for 20 years, and I have a question for the whole city council. We elected you as constituents. When are you going to listen to us with what we want in the town? I.e., leave J.C. Park alone? Leave the yacht club alone? Do the repairs necessary? Y'all don't listen to anybody. You don't listen to your constituents. You do what you want, and that isn't fair to any of us, considering our tax dollars pay your salaries. So that's not fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, no applause. If you want to raise your hands, be more than happy for that.
Hello? My name is Tom Shadrack, permanent resident of Cape Coral and past chair of the Budget Review Committee. I want to talk today about the $60 million Parks Go Bonds. This was voted on by the referendum back in November of 2018. The main purpose of the bond issue was to build 10 new parks and provide significant enhancements to the yacht club. The city's On the Move, the publication, in the fall of 2018, advertised the projected cost of each park. The yacht club enhancements were valued at $11 million of the $60 million bond issue. The promise to the voters was also to have these parks completed by the end of 2021. Basically, all of them were to be complete in three years. Here we are today, five years later, and only four of the simpler neighborhood parks are complete. Several more are in construction, but there are several remaining that have not started, including anything with the yacht club park. In March 2022, the council used the consent agenda to remove the yacht club funding quickly and quietly from the Parks Go Bond project. Voters had no say, just like the stipend. Soon, the council will discuss how to pay for this massive cost overrun of these park projects. It is currently projected by city management to cost 88.5 million to complete these parks, and this still does not include the yacht club enhancements. The property taxpayers are paying the $60 million debt to of these parks for the next 15 years. The $60 million Go Bond project debt should be reduced by 11 million, the original estimate for the yacht club enhancements that got the vote approved. Finance has not issued all the bonds for the Parks Referendum yet, due to the numerous schedule delays. The council needs to reduce the value of the $60 million Go Bond debt to 49 million, reduce the debt by the 11 million allocated to the yacht club. This is the ethical and honorable thing to do for the voters. The citizens are not getting the most important project that was approved on the Parks Go Bond referendum. Find another way to pay for the $40 million cost overrun versus tax increases. I suggest reducing other government spending. Earn your additional pay. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you.
My name is Dave Kalish. The young lady who spoke first, it's a shame that we all feel the same way that she does, and just because there aren't a lot of people here tonight may give you a comfort to think that we're going away, and it's not happening. I guarantee you that, okay, number one. Number two, the fact that you guys or you people, because I know you have a young lady also, feel that you could just disregard and do anything that you want to do, it blows my mind, and I can't, I have a lot of trouble with it, and I know a lot of other people do, but it's really a shame, you know? And I see how concerned you all are, but anyway. The rules, there's a new rule that you're looking to put in place about the behavior of us when we're here, because we're so out of control, as you could see, okay? And it's kind of ridiculous, but it also says here that the rules, if there's any controversy, it should be open, moved to a discussion, okay? If you think that there's no controversy with what you guys are playing with, I don't understand, and I know you know it, I just believe you don't care. The city executive staff, city manager and city attorney, mayor and city council conceived the plan to allow the compensation of the mayor and council members to double their yearly pay. This plot took three steps: deletion of all appointed volunteer experts of non-statutory boards and committees, removing these boards set precedence to remove the members of CRA board later, removal of the Volunteer Community Development Agency CRA board members and appointing themselves as commissioner, taken from five members to eight members, creating three resolutions to allow compensation for the CRA board, create a new council rule to yearly approve a stipend for the board, and the final resolution to approve the stipend values. The city attorney uses Florida Statute 163.356 to justify a monthly stipend to the CRA board members and extended that philosophy to mayor and council expenses. The first sentence of the cited statute reads, "A commissioner shall receive no compensation of services, but is entitled to the necessary expenses, including travel expenses incurred in the discharge of duties. These actions are a complete misfeasance of the law, and it is neglected duty as an elected official with responsibilities to represent the city residents fairly." The city attorney?
Thank you, sir.
I'll finish it next time.
Before my time starts, can I give this to the city's attorney so he knows that everything I'm saying is the truth, and I have it documented, please? Before I get started, my time starts, could you stop my time, and I give this to the city's attorney so he knows everything I'm saying is the truth?
You can give it to the city clerk.
City clerk, please, and please start my time over, please. Thomas Jefferson said honesty is the first chapter in the book of wisdom. C.S. Lewis said integrity is doing the right thing even when no one is watching. I'm going to request that Chief Sizemore remember his sworn oath to the Constitution and doesn't allow my First Amendment right to free speech infringed upon and not allow mayor who has appointed himself a dictator to cause him to violate his oath of office.
Sir, you have to address us as a collective body, not as an individual.
Well, okay, while TM Strategies is consistent on vetting candidates whom they oppose, it seems they spend very little effort vetting those who do not do their bidding, all right? How well was Mayor John Gunther vetted? TM Strategies and the establishment politicians who endorsed him? With very little effort from my staff, we uncovered the real character of John Wilbur Gunner III. Not only is he dishonest-
Sir, how many times do I have to tell you? You address us as a-
I'm addressing you. I'm addressing this board.
But you cannot do that. You can address city council as a collective body.
You don't want the truth to come out.
Sir, address the city council as a-
Give me my time back. You've stopped me several times. Apparently, he is not fond of sectional couches because he threw one through a bay window at the same house he destroyed.
As a collective body, I'm not going to tell you again.
Mayor Gunther, you don't want your criminal record out.
It doesn't bother me at all that you're going to address this council as a-
You have been accused of not only-
Sir, I'm not going to argue with you.
It'll go to the media.
As a collective body.
As a collect-
Yes.
As a collective, then take my time back, because you stopped me.
No, sir.
As-
As a collective body, you address this council.
As a collective body, Mayor John Gunther must have a-
As a collective body.
You were accused of kidnapping. You were accused of trying to run over a woman's husband with a bicycle. All these things, I have proof from Arundel County, Maryland.
As a collective body.
How did you become a mayor and do this? How are you a mayor? I have your entire background.
People in the city of Cape Coral voted for me, and I don't think you're even a resident of Cape Coral, but-
I'm an advocate for Florida, and I grew up here. I grew up in this city my whole life.
I had no problem discussing that. Your time is up, sir, since you can't follow the rules. You have a right to follow the rules, and you're not doing that. No, sir. Your time is up. Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please. Next speaker. Ma'am, if you outburst again, I'm going to ask you to leave. Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
I hate to follow that performance. Excuse me. Excuse me. It's my turn to talk. Thank you. I've talked to some of you. I'm Sally Flash, Beach Parkway. I'm going to talk about the park. I've talked to some of you about the park, so my thoughts really went to the park again. And in my opinion, there's two things that will damage the park the most: the removal of the Australian pines and installation of a bar. Now, I am going to address the trees first. As you know, the world's been going through some pretty wild climate changes, and everyone is trying to cut back on CO2 to curtail global warming by reducing emissions and sequestering CO2 by planting more trees. It should be a crime to cut down any healthy, useful tree that helps reduce CO2. And what are you doing? You're cutting the Australian pines. What should be done is leave these magnificent trees standing and plant hundreds more, like in your J.C. Park plan. Reading up on these pines, they may be saved because they provide a service. They hold J.C. Park's bank in place, they mitigate the wind, they provide wildlife sanctuary, and they provide service. An exquisite shade year-round, unlike other trees that drop their leaves in the winter. Now, you say the city has a rule that you have to abide by to take down the pines, but you've already broken some rules. You've voted yourselves a stipend, when it should have been through the vote of the people. You broke your zoning classification of the park from residential to commercial, and you're going against the original deed that requires the park to be there for recreation, not commercial development. So why not break the rule about the trees and keep them to help the environment come out looking like good guys for the 10,000 people who have already signed petitions to keep the trees and the original purpose of the park? Some of you have talked about the days at the park that you loved and wanting to bring back the small towns, the mom-and-pop stores that are no longer. People like the old. They like the past, and they want an alternative to the bar scene on 47th Terrace. A bar at the park would change the character of the park, but you say a bistro won't make it down there without selling alcohol. How sad, the people you want to come to the park need alcohol to enjoy the experience. We'd do just fine without those people. So you say you can't tell private people how to use their land, but public parks should be left for the people to decide.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Marie Kavanaugh, and I'm here to advise you that item 17 on the consent agenda needs to be pulled before you do your normal two-minute approval of all items on the consent agenda that this week amounts to $19,679,696.35 without discussion. Reading your council agenda rules, item 17, on the consent agenda, you are and have been in violation of Section T1, as this section states, "In order to promote an orderly system of holding a public meeting and to give every person an opportunity to be heard, yet you only allow 60 minutes for citizen input at three minutes per person, which only allows about 20 people to speak, leaving many in the chamber unable to express their opinion of points being made by the speaker. This, in my humble opinion, is a First Amendment right being denied. Your solution is for audience members to indicate their approval by doing the idiotic jazz hands, so no one watching the video in real time or later gets to see the reaction of the citizens in attendance. Clapping and cheering is a form of expression, and you're trying to deny us. And since I've been coming to these meetings, I've never seen any speaker booed or demeaned, so you cannot use that as an excuse. Since I'm not 100%, it is a First Amendment violation. I have forwarded this concern to the Florida State Attorney General for review, along with a couple of samples of violations of the sunshine laws. Now, for your violation, Section TD, unauthorized remarks, stamping of feet, whistling, or similar demonstrations shall not be permitted. Yet, at virtually every meeting I have attended, recognition and achievements section of the agenda, you start the applause, and as such, we should hammer a gavel down to stop you and have you removed. What's the difference? Your procedure does not allow an exception to Section TD. It is your procedure. You need to follow it, too. We get the real issue, the action of thug dictators in order to try to silence us, and a series of penalties for violators, which leaves you in violation of Cape Coral City Charter, Section 4.17, action requiring an ordinance, in addition to other acts required by law. Provisions of this charter need to be done by ordinance, not in a procedure, and that is provide for a fine or other penalty to establish a rule or regulation for violation of which a fine or other penalty is imposed, not by a procedure, as you're trying to do. The definition of procedure, according to the Cambridge Dictionary, is a set of actions that is the official or accepted way of doing something.
Thank you, ma'am. No more outs.
I got the mic. You don't talk.
Yeah.
Wally Ilch is moved here in 1990, 34-year resident. I want to talk about some things that were said two weeks ago by the leader of the Lee County Republican Party, of which I'm a member, McCord, holding Republican all my voting life and a veteran. Here's the deal: you want to come and talk about a stipend? That's one thing, but to get up here and tear down our city youth council is disgusting. It's deplorable. It should have never been, it never should have happened. Listen, my understanding is Mr. Michael Thompson doesn't even live in the city of Cape Coral. I hear he lives in Fort Myers. You know what? Take your business and keep it across the river where it belongs. Don't come here and slander our youth for what they're doing to try to become better citizens that everybody's here to do. I think it was appalling that he did that. I want to go into a couple other things. I've been here a while, and there's only one other person I see in the room that's been here as long as I've known, and that's ex-mayor of Mertes, Joe Mazurkowitz. When I got here, there was one bridge in South Cape Coral, two lanes, one each way. The first thing they said was, "We need to build another bridge to let out and in traffic flow and build it a little higher." What did we hear? "Oh, no, we can't have it. We can't do that." The next thing, water independence for Cape Coral. How many people know what water independence for Cape Coral is in this city right now? Joe does. I do. Maybe the city manager might. It's the reclaimed water system. What did we hear? "Oh, no, we don't want potty water. We don't want it. We won't have it, and it's not going to happen." Guess what? It's what saving the city's grass. Everybody, they were running out of water at the water plants because people sprinkler, people couldn't take a shower, so they came up with water independence for Cape Coral. What was next? The midpoint bridge. "Oh, no, we can't have that, Everest homeowners. It's not happening. We don't need it. We don't need it. We don't need the midpoint bridge." Now, what would the traffic be like without a midpoint bridge today? And we listened to everybody. When they built this building right here, the new city hall, we gave the engineers, retired engineer club of Cape Coral came in and helped with the design, and guess what they said? "You don't need that much parking." The building wasn't open a month, and we had to look it up, and we had to expand the parking lot in one month after the city hall was built, because we listened to what the constituents wanted. That's just the beginning. When I got here, the median average of this community was 66 years old. I'm not taking anything away from there, because I'm now 67, but the average age today in this community is about 45 years old. Let's get real. This city is changing, whether we want it to or not. It's no more called Cape Coma, and we are moving forward, and I commend everybody on council that's moving us forward.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Counsel, Rich Leon, 37 years old. You want to create a policy. When you have Brittany, first of all, excellent award, all right? She's been with the city for years. I've had many drinks from her, as my belly can tell you. We should bring samples in next time for the audience and you guys. Might make these meetings a little bit fun. Listen, I left my dead horse outside, but we're still going to talk about your double the pay, all right? I think the reality is, again, you didn't talk about it at the dais, okay? I hear different council members, I hear them saying one thing, the other. Last week at the Republican Club meeting, we had a council member speak, saying this was the mayor's idea. It was his agenda item. Who knows, you know? But the problem is, we don't know, okay? And it's recorded on video, so we can go back and look at it. What I don't understand is why we don't continue to stop what we're doing and have the discussion, have, say, why did we bring it forward? Your council rules dictate that you require a second to bring staff into it and involve a situation, a resolution, whatever. We saw that at the last meeting with one of the council members about the council pay, okay? Where was the second for the stipend? Where was the conversation at the beginning? Because it was never had. We look back at the videos. There was never a second to bring that forward. Did you break council rules? These are the questions you have to ask yourselves in a discussion that was never had, and it's unfortunate, because you guys are in a position of authority. That doesn't make you leaders, though. Leaders do what's right. They help bring the people around them up, and they are transparent, and they allow for discussion to happen, and that never happened, all right? Real quick, because there seems to be some confusion, I brought my brief Roberts rules, and it comes to the motions to rescind or amend something previously adopted. Suppose, however, the after-meeting is over, you feel that the assembly made the wrong decision when it adopted some motion. For example, assume the assembly had adopted a resolution authorizing the purchase of certain property, which you now think is a mistake, or a stipend. You are able to move to rescind that motion relating to the stipend. You are able to amend that motion to what- You are able to amend that motion to whatever you want on the price point. You have that opportunity. Everybody up there does. Doesn't matter the way you voted.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you for what you do. Thank you.
My name is Robert Long. I'm a Cape Coral resident and taxpayer. Two meetings ago, when I was here, we were given a long rambling speech about the evils of urban blight. I'm not going to mention any names here, but you know who you are. Now, if you folks go through with a current plan to waste 12 million or more taxpayer dollars to ruin the atmosphere in J.C. Park, you're increasing urban blight. You're not reducing it. You're making it worse. You're bringing in traffic. You're bringing in trash. You're bringing in noise. Now, the question still remains, if local residents want to enjoy the quiet solitude and the benefits that we now get from J.C. Park, where do you suggest that we go if you ruin the park with your current plan? Could I have a response on that?
This is for your opportunity for input, sir.
Okay? I've just given you an opportunity for an open public conversation, and you have refused. Where's the transparency that you guys preach about? I don't see it happening. You obviously prefer to do things...
No, ma'am. That's not what citizens' input is, okay?
You obviously prefer to do things in secrecy, behind closed doors, and then spring them on the taxpayers. The stipend is an excellent example of that. The truth is, if you were open and transparent, you wouldn't need the police here to control your meetings for you. Okay? So since you refuse to really engage in public conversation, I'm going to go home. Good night.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. Excuse me. My name is Bill Pranger. I live on Southeast 20th Place, right across from J.C. Park. Just for the record, my wife and I are very much opposed to the plans for our beautiful neighborhood park. But today, my comments focus on this unsolicited proposal that was received for the J.C. Parks project. Sure. Sorry about that. So I understand that after you receive this unsolicited proposal, that per Florida statute 25.065, you need to put out a formal bid. I understand that was done, and I also further understand that you did not receive any bids, any responses, other than the unsolicited bid that you originally received. So the RFQ process, there was nobody else responded to that bid. Now, part of that, I think, was because in that bid, you had a $25,000 nonrefundable application fee. That fee was supposed to be to cover the evaluation of each proposal. That makes it seem like it's a pretty complicated proposal, if you need $25,000 to review each of the proposals you get. But yet, the same statute tells you that the timeframe that you are allowed to give bidders is the minimum of 21 days, maximum of 120. I think in this case, the bidders were given 24 days. So you have a $25,000 nonrefundable application fee, which would seem to make you think that this is a pretty complex project, if you need $25,000 to review each proposal, but yet you only gave the responders 24 days to respond. So that same statute, by the way, also mentions that the unsolicited proposal, whoever submitted that, also needs to pay that $25,000 application fee. So just to confirm, I'd just like to have it confirmed that whoever that unsolicited proposal was from is going to or has already paid the $25,000 nonrefundable fee. I'd like to know if we can find out who the name of that bidder was and when the results of that bid will be opened, and any kind of explanation on why you would have a $25,000 application fee, which indicates a complex project, and only give a bidder 24 days to respond. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Hi. My name is Jerry Dunn. I've never been to one of these things before, so I'll say it just the way that I'd say it. I hired a contractor in this town to put in my swimming pool. Fast forward, my swimming pool basically got put in, but my contractor failed his last inspection. After that, I never saw him again. My contractor's permit expired. My contractor's permit expired for six months before I could find a warm-hearted person over here to help me out with it. I lost $38,000 because I could not claim my pool keys with my insurance company. Now, that $38,000 is a civil matter. I'll sue his butt for that day. But the deal is this: I want to know how a contractor can have a permit, and it expires, not only expire, but expire for six months. If a permit expires, you have not met the regulatory requirement to have a permit. But at the same time, you should not be able to go over here and continue to pool permits. And you should not be able to have a permit out here existing because you have not met the regulatory requirement to even have a permit. We have the technology. Push a button in the morning and say, "Do we have any expired permits?" At this point in time, we red-flag them, and they don't get nothing until they meet the requirements to have a permit in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. I get my cherry yet out of them.
Lisa Cohen, Southwest Cape. I am deeply troubled by the ongoing failures of our city's infrastructure, amplified by yesterday's chaos on Cape Coral Parkway. One accident should imperilize our city. Yet thousands were stranded for hours, while residents suffer, some of you on the council, enjoy hefty raises, while essential city workers are underpaid and undervalued. Budget constraints are cited, yet raises for council members far exceed those for workers. It's unjust and shameful. Now dissent from the public is labeled as the enemy. And now, we begin a new fight that you have placed on the consent agenda to avoid discussion like cowards. While we fight over outdated policies, you mean like the First Amendment? How dare you undermine our constitutional rights? We have the right to address our government with our grievances as an outline in our five parts of the First Amendment. I'll pursue legal action if necessary with consequences so severe your heads will spin. I will not rest until I achieve coming after everyone that votes for this personally. It's time for accountability, transparency, and real leadership. We demand action to addressing our failing infrastructure and fairly compensate our hard-working city employees. Congratulations, you've awakened the sleeping bear. Expect to hear from me weekly, exposing every injustice until accountability is achieved. I will be working tirelessly to uncover every single con you might have going on. I will not rest until you are all held accountable, even if that means exposing schemes like using taxpayer-funded workers for laying sod while on overtime for a vacant lot you're selling. I'm coming for you. Recall will never be so easy. Keep it up. Now, what else can I do with my remaining time to get arrested and have you fund my retirement? The residents are so upset that yelling and flicking off a double funeral procession because I'm certain they were unaware of what was taking place this week. The sight of city vehicles makes residents furious because of you. Because of you. Families were disrespected this week because the residents hate everything about this city. You have failed us. This is the worst council in the history of our city. And I am saying this after I fought the mayor of a previous council. This is disgusting, and it is shameful. I have constitutions here for all of you if you need them, because you clearly don't understand the rights of the people. We have a right to address our government for a redress of our grievances. Do you understand the words?
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Francine. I'm a citizen of Cape Coral. I just want to say, you people up there are really, really greedy. You should leave J.C. Park as it is. I like riding my bike there all the time, so just leave it alone. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Penelope Bodek, and I reside in Southwest Cape. I've been a resident here for about eight years, but I've been to many council meetings. I've always just sat and listened to what the residents in the city council had to say. I haven't always agreed with what you've decided, case in point, the four corners, but I've learned to live with it. But this stipend, however, I just cannot wrap my head around it or accept it. I want to thank the council people, which I guess I can't address individually, but I would like to thank the council people that either did not take the stipend right off or the council person that gave it back. You're both doing the right thing, but you need to convince the mayor and the other city council members to do the same thing. How can you, with a swipe of a pen, give yourself a 100 percent raise? It's greed. Did you forget or just not care about the thousands of people that lost everything in Hurricane Ian or are still waiting to be made whole, and some never will? It's just greed. People are struggling to pay their high taxes, energy bills, and to put food on their tables, and you can double your pay and make it retroactive to October when you weren't even doing the job. It's greed. I seriously don't know how you sleep at night, because you're greedy people, and I pray to God that the six of you come elections are our nightmare in the past. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Get everybody here. My name is Jay Higgins, Northwest Cape Coral, and I agree with everything that a lady just said. I also agree with Mr. Shadrack. Thank you. And so many other people here. But that's not what I'm here to talk about. I'm here to talk about a few things. One thing is, you guys say how you're responsive. I've emailed you guys a couple of times, the council a couple of times. Two of you guys, two of you council people have actually responded, and I appreciate that. The other people have not. I do want to talk about the travel policy that's upcoming on the agenda tonight. First of all, a $2,000 ceiling for a round-trip air flight is exorbitant. My wife sends people across the country every week, and they have a $500 ceiling before they have to ask for approval, so I would amend that. I don't want to pay for your check luggage. I don't want to pay for your gratuities. I want to pay for your laundry, and I don't want to pay for your dry cleaning either. So I would advise you all to adjust the policy accordingly. Remember, you represent us, taxpayers, as citizens, and you need to save us as much money as possible. I get it with the stipend. When you see how much these other people are making, the other city employees, you want your piece of the pie, and I understand that. But you did it the wrong way. I've also been looking at other spending here in the city, and I see that we spend $82,000 a year on council memberships and invoices, including almost $33,000 to the Florida League of Cities. The Metro Planning Organization gets $18,000 of our tax money. The National League of Cities gets $13,000 of our tax money, and the U.S. Conference of Mayors, of mayors, $13,486. What are we getting for this money? What can you do? The other thing about the stipend is, I went back for the last year, and I looked at how many council reports were given. Because you work so hard for your money and your stipend, I found that 75% of the time, there was no report given by council. There was one councilman that was very good, had a report almost every time about what he did to help enhance our lives in the city of Cape, but the rest of you are absent. It's time to be responsible and report. And I'd like to see a report on the feedback you got on the stipend from your constituents. I bet this love fest would never end if we had the findings of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Jim Kozak, and you guys are in a unique position, and I don't know if I envy you or not, but as elected officials, you get to shape the city, and you get to leave a legacy. And that's a legacy that your grandchildren will see, and I'm sure you want to make them proud of you. I don't know why any of you moved to Cape Coral, or whether you grew up in Cape Coral, or how long you've been here. I've been here about 13 years. The reason I came to Cape Coral instead of North Naples was because North Naples is an urban sprawl. Cape Coral, compared to North Naples, is a paradise. It's not as crowded. The density is not as... This is a community of mostly single-family houses, you know, some high-rises, some apartments, some condos, some duplexes, but primarily single-family houses, well-spaced out, a good park system, a good school system, a lot of ball fields, things like that. So I don't really understand what this council's doing. In the past year, you've done Hudson Creek. That's 17,000 acres. I don't know how much of that was designated for parkland. You know, the study that you did in 2015 said the number-one thing that the park study that you need is more parkland, more parkland. So I don't know how much of that, 1,700 acres, became parkland. I hope a good chunk of it. You also recently approved coral lakes and increased the density of that. And you just recently, last meeting, I believe, the Pine Island Road area, you added 3,500 more spaces in a limited thing. So all you're doing is increasing the density, getting away from the single-house family. You're cramming anything you can into the yacht club, into Redfish Point, into J.C. Park. I think you're trying to make us a North Naples, and I hope your grandchildren are very appreciative of your legacy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi. My name is Sheila Baskin, Cape Coral. I'm here because I do not want J.C. Park changed from a peaceful, family-friendly park to a commercial park with a bar, et cetera, at the cost to taxpayers of over $12 million. I also do not like that you gave yourselves a raise, and of course, those who accepted that, that you call a stipend. The way you did it is wrong. You got rid of volunteers and then doubled your salaries. Yet when it came time to replace Patty Cummings, you said it would cost too much for the taxpayers to have a special election for us to vote on. But you had no problem doubling your salaries at taxpayers' expense, or to spend over $12 million on changes to a park that most of us did not want. We have more important things that Cape Coral needs, maybe another hospital, maybe more traffic lights, fix our water issues, fix the street's flooding issues, and better paying jobs. There's so many other things that the money could be spent on that we really could use or to improve Cape Coral. And do the right thing. Rescind the stipends for those who have not yet done that, and leave J.C. Park the way it is, a peaceful, family-friendly park. And a bar should not be in a park. I do not want to bring my granddaughter to a park that has a bar. It just doesn't go together. Again, do the right thing for the taxpayers of Cape Coral. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Tara Jenner. Great minds think alike. I'd like to add, in addition to the rights that we have that are enumerated in the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution that says we have the right to redress our government for grievances, the Florida State Constitution actually gives us an affirmative right to instruct our leaders in advance of them making mistakes. So I'd like to come here today and I want to share with you, I am an attorney. I usually refer to myself as a recovering attorney or lawyer because I recognize lawyers have a very poor reputation. However, in this particular room, I actually feel like I might be safe because I think the city council has a worse reputation than almost every lawyer that's out there. So one of the reasons I'm here today, and yes, I'm with the Lee GOP, but I do speak for myself, and what I'm doing is I'm visiting all of the elected officials and all of those individuals that are running for office, and I'm challenging you on a couple of things. So if you would be so kind as to either take your iPad out or your pen, I'm going to encourage you to go to a website, and it's K-R-I-S-A-N-N-E-H-A-L-L.com. And in the search bar, look up employment application. And in there is a questionnaire on the Constitution, and I'm going to encourage each and every one of you to do sort of like a take-home test. Open up your Constitution, open up your history books, fill out that form, and if you don't know the answers to the questions, please feel free to call me. My number, for anybody who cares, is 239-218-4307, and I'm more than happy to send you to source documents, not the gospel according to Tara Jenner, and I would be happy to help you with that. And I'm also going to encourage this of any candidate that's running, as well as any current incumbent. And when it comes to anyone who is running for office or is a current incumbent who will be subject to the Form 6 Financial Disclosure and Ethics Form, I'm going to encourage you to get that done now and make that available on your personal website or Facebook page so that we can have an indication of what your transparency is, so that we don't have to wait until it gets posted on the supervisor of elections' website down the line. If you've got nothing to hide, go for it. We'd love to see what you have to offer. And again, I also have constitutions. If you'd like one, I'll be here through the remainder of the meeting. Thank you very much, and have a blessed day.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Debbie McCormick, and I'm a proud resident of Cape Coral since 1972. I have been attending the City Hall, City Council meetings for well over a year, and I just want to say one thing about J.C. Park. I am hoping that it goes back to a neighborhood park. But this is more of a personal thing, but I think it will resonate with some people. I have two grandsons, seven and five, and I'm not better than anybody else in this world. I try to be bigger. And let me tell you, yes, it's directed at city council at times, but really and truly, and you can boo, my father was a Marine, and I have broad shoulders, and I can take it. But to sit here instead of addressing, we want respect. We want transparency, but yet we're talking to them like they're garbage. They're people. Okay, whatever. Everybody has a right to their opinion because this is the United States of America, and I believe in the Constitution and all our rights. But please, please, for the sake of everybody, so that we can all sleep at night, try to work together. I don't know how that's going to happen, okay? Whether we vote you in or out, or over or under, I don't know. But I ask, as a resident of 52 years, here when there were only four high schools, when where we're at now is, you know, cow pastures or whatever you want to call it, please come together. I'm willing to listen to things to help that happen, you know, between the council. And let me tell you, I got to say, the police department, the firemen, and the rest of the city employees, and I've dealt with them a lot throughout the years. Kudos to all of you. And they're people, and I'm sure, I've sat here for over a year now, almost a year, and this last three months, been biting my tongue, but I ain't biting it no more because I have rights to my opinion, and whoever likes it, fine; whoever doesn't, fine. But please, let's try to work together for the sake of this beautiful city that as far as I'm concerned, you can give me a house anywhere else in this country, and I wouldn't take it. That's how much I love this city, and I love the people of this city, whether you agree with me or not. And not just this city, Lee County. Thank you very much. 19 seconds. Y'all have a blessed life.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name's Julia Atari. I'm a citizen in Cape Coral, and what I have to say probably is very personal because I've watched people angry at you. I've watched you gavel people. I've watched you demand respect. However, when I was fighting the fight and I actually reported a District 4 council person for not leaving her district, you let people come to this dais, demean me, lie about me. You all knew, everyone except for one person, knew that everything I wrote in my letter to the governor was correct. Dan Shepard, excuse me, as a whole, called me a liar. District 2 called me a liar on the dais, okay? You, two other districts passed her house every day and knew where she lived. Every single one of you did not do your job for the citizens to protect them from an injustice, and you let me and my family take the hit, and you let us be demeaned and abused. So I'm sorry if your feelings are hurt up there when people are disappointed in you. I'm disappointed that not one of you said, gee, you were correct, you weren't a liar, and your letter was absolutely 100% accurate. So sit there, cry, gavel, whatever you want, but every one of you should be held accountable for those actions, and I still want to know when you're going to recall the decisions that were made while she was sitting in that seat illegally.
Thank you.
How you doing? I live across from J.C. Park.
State your name, sir, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Vincent Valeria. I live across from J.C. Park, and I'm totally against this park. Listen, I live in New York. I come down here, been down here for 17 years. I spend my money down here. I come down here to get away from the jungle, New York City. That's why I come down there. You're going to come down, you're going to put all these food stuff in there, and the traffic, the pollution, and these people, they're pissed off at you. And they're not going to forget you election time, but I will be down here to make myself a citizen, to vote yous out. And the other thing I would like, I almost lost my train of thought, is that, since you've given yourselves a big raise, why don't you help us out with the insurance? Mine doubled.
Thank you.
Nice hat.
Love the hat.
Trump.
Now we'll come back.
Okay, my name is Patty Schumacher, and I'm a citizen here, a resident of Cape Coral full-time. And I recently attended some budget meeting and to observe the process and to educate myself exactly, you know, where the dollars are going. And to be frank, I wasn't impressed with the budget process. It appears to me you're using classic baseline budgeting, which you just take whatever's already there and just pile a bunch of stuff on top of it, and then, oh, okay, and then we're going to add another new project here and another new project there. That's not the way you do a budget. That's not the way I do my budget. I go line by line, figure out what I've been spending my money on. Is it necessary? It may have been necessary at one time. Is it still necessary? You know, with the stipends, the board that you replaced, they were doing it gratis, zero, zero expense. So that's what the compensation is worth. You aren't, if you take on more work that was done for no dollars, that's what you I didn't have any prepared remarks, so I'd like to take, well, let's see, I got a minute I noticed that when we have awards, recognitions, you know, we're all invited to applaud and give kudos to those people, and that's very nice. The mayor, the council mayor, you know, encourages it. But when a citizen says something that we all recognize as worthy and appreciate, we're not allowed to give that person the same recognition. So I'm going to take my time here as part of my comments to applaud all the people that come up here and give you what for, make you accountable, tell you we don't take this lightly, that we will not be ignored, and you will pay a price for ignoring us, for not doing our will, because you were hired to represent us, not yourself. And the people that take the time, take their time, that's part of their life. Every minute of your life is time. You don't get that back. Everybody that came up here and felt compelled to come here because you're not doing your job, they will never get this time back. This is time they could be spending making dinner for their families, doing chores at home, because most people are working and they only have so much time.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Citizen's input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizen's input? Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things in regard to a few of the inquiries. One is, city manager, if you could, the unsolicited proposal, are they subject to the same application fee as the proposals that were put out to bid?
We have a procurement ordinance that's in Article 7, Purchase and Sale of Real Property, Division 1, Purchasing and Goods of Services, specifically outlined in Section 2-144. Public-private partnerships are different from invitations to bid, and in the public-private partnership section, an unsolicited proposal for a project submitted pursuant to state law shall submit an application fee of $25,000 payable to the city in the form of a money order or cashier's check at the time of the unsolicited submittal. So that's it. We do not require invitations to bid and proposals for RFPs to submit an application fee. When somebody submits an unsolicited proposal, it is not something that the city was intending on or had specified. What is happening at that point is someone is seeing something we're talking about and has a unique and innovative way to deliver that. For example, we discussed at our budget workshop the possibility of fast-tracking or speeding up the UEP, which would then require a new wastewater plant in the north. Anybody who heard that could come forward with an unsolicited proposal to deliver a water plant and submit a proposal with a fee. So anytime that we're speaking about anything in a public meeting, the private sector is able to take that information and then try to come up with a unique and innovative way to deliver what we've been discussing. And in this case, with J.C. Park, the proposer put together a proposal and submitted the $25,000 fee per our code of ordinances.
Okay, thank you. There was comments about membership in Florida League of Cities, National League of Cities, League of Mayors, that type of thing. All I would share with you is that when I was elected and took office, while I had held many other responsibilities and relatively large ones, I had never been involved as a municipal official. And so I felt it was important for me to learn from those that were in the job and from those that could teach about the job. And so I enrolled in the Florida League of Cities Institute for Elected Municipal Officials. Then I found it extremely helpful that that education was available, and I partook of it in both, they have a beginner class, if you will, and an advanced class, if you will. I took both of them, graduated from both of them, and I continue to be involved because what I feel is, is that it helps me gain perspective on how issues are handled in other cities, you know, to some degree, don't recreate the wheel. If someone else has had issues like that before, had challenges like that before, for them to share what they went through, the research that they did, and could share that with us, I thought that was advantageous for us to be privy to that type of information. So that's done both at the state level and at the national level. So belonging to those organizations certainly prepares us and provides a wealth of knowledge and experience that can be shared. And so I participate in those. So the membership dollars that are required to belong, I am trying to make as best use of those dollars as possible by attending those conferences, those classes that they have to offer, to make best use of that. I think that is a good thing to continue for our city. There was something that was said, there was never anything talked about J.C. Park last year, and you might not have been aware of it, the speaker that was talking, there was a four-hour open forum held at the McCullough Market where anyone could attend, and out of 220,000 people, we had about 200 people there. And so there was open forum allowed, and many of you came, and we appreciate that you did come. There were some choices, some options, some input we wanted on certain areas of the park. People gave that. Certainly, one of the choices was, don't do anything, and we continue to hear that today. But there was requests for feedback and guidance, and we used quite a bit of that. And if you take a look at the design progression from day one to where we are today, you'll notice that there have been many changes based on the feedback that those that gave it to us, you know, had recommended. As far as the budget process itself, you know, we went to more of an open budget processes here, and the lady that spoke in regard to attending that, thank you very much for attending it. Again, of our entire citizenry, I think the largest attendance we had was eight of the two days. But what I would tell you is, for those of you that did come, that was just a scratch-the-surface piece of the overall process. That was, if you will, in the vernacular, spitballing ideas, trying to get some direction on kind of where do we go? Where do we need to cut? Where do we need to infuse? And so that particular meeting was meant simply for that, just to open the can. And so as these meetings continue, and they will through the entire process, I would encourage you to attend them because they will get more line by line by line. But this very first two-day workshop that was held was the 40,000-foot level, and from there, we will start to get into more of the detail and more of the minutia in the budget. So stay tuned with that. And with that, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to Item 9, is Business. 9A is the Consent Agenda. I'll now open up the Consent Agenda for council to pool any items, or if no items are asked to be pooled, then I'll entertain a motion regarding the Consent Agenda.
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinkie.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr. Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
I'm sorry.
Long.
Your woman's here.
Aye. Shepard.
I have a question.
Seven ayes, motion carry.
How do you hold on to events in the middle of the day when most of the voters are...
Please, Madam City Clerk, continue the vote.
If I may, I'll restate, I have an aye from Steinkie, an aye from Welsh, an aye from Carr, an aye from Gunter, an aye from Hayden, an aye from Long, and an aye from Shepard. Seven ayes, motion carry. Seven ayes, motion carried for the Consent Agenda approval.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to 9C is Unfinished Business. C1 is Follow-Up Items for Council. I don't have anything listed. Council have any follow-up items? Item D is New Business, none listed. Personnel actions, none listed. Petition to Council, none listed. Follow-up items for city management, none. Item 10 is Ordinances and Resolutions. 10A is Public Hearings, quasi-judicial hearings, the first one of which we have Resolution 10-24. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 10-24, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the southeast 39th Street right-of-way and the underlying easements located adjacent to lots 34 through 37, Block 544, Cape Coral, Unit 11, providing for the vacation of plat for platted easements lying in lots 34 through 35, Block 544, Cape Coral, Unit 11. Property located at 1729 and 1733 Southeast 39th Street, providing an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. In reference to the specific quasi-judicial hearing and as required pursuant to our code, this will be the time for any council member to address any ex parte communications they have may, may have received regarding this specific matter.
Thank you. Any council members have any ex parte communications to reveal? Okay, seeing none, this is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the record, Patrick Coltrane, Senior Planner downstairs in TSD. As Kimberly mentioned, the case before you is Resolution 10-24. It's a vacation. The applicants are Rick Johannick and David Carlisle, as well as Robert Carlisle. These two property owners own two properties located at 1733 and 1729 Southeast 39th Street. Together, they're requesting to vacate 2,000 square feet of street right-of-way and underlying easements on what we call a hammerhead, and to vacate 504 square feet of platted easements located in lots 34 and 35 within Block 544. Here is a zoomed-out aerial showing you the two properties. I've highlighted them in red. And on the left, a city map showing you approximately where we are in southeast Cape Coral. These two maps show the future land use and the zoning of the two parcels. As you see, the future land use map shows a single-family residential zoning district on the subject properties, as well as all surrounding properties. And on the zoning map, a similar situation. The two properties are zoned R1, as are all surrounding properties within our mailing notification area, which is 500 feet. The vacation application was initiated by Brian Hag, who is the owner of Windward Construction, who is designated authorized representative of the owners of both lots. The eastern property was cleared in January 2019. The owner plans to construct a new home on the property. The vacated right-of-way, if approved, will be allocated solely to that eastern property owner. As I mentioned, the future land use and the zoning are R1. Staff's recommending approval of the resolution, which includes some recommended conditions. The hearing examiner heard this case on November 7, supports staff's recommended conditions and support of the resolution. Briefly, the rest, the vacated area proposed is in blue. It's the end of the hammerhead. The PUE to be vacated is in red, depicted in Exhibit B. And Exhibit C reestablishes the perimeter public utility easement. The request met the standards of review from LDC 3.4.5. B. I don't know why the computer did that, sorry. The PUE reservations are conditioned to ensure a six-foot-wide perimeter PUE will be reestablished. The city does have an existing stormwater inlet and a drainage pipe, which will be relocated to accommodate the proposed vacation. The applicants will relocate that inlet and pipe into the city right-of-way in coordinates with, in coordination with Public Works. That's a conditioned into our resolution. The three utility providers have provided letters of no objection. Lastly, the comprehensive plan supports this through future land use policy 1.15. Staff, in summary, staff has recommended approval of Resolution 10-24, which includes the conditions. The hearing examiner supports the recommendation. Prior to HECs, I received one call for information. And since HECs, I received one other phone call just a few days ago that was just inquiring about the case. They did not support it or deny it. They owned a vacation house in the area and had a few questions for me. And I will stand by for any of your questions at this time.
Thank you. Is the applicant present here tonight? Okay, I'll now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 10-24, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion regarding Resolution 10-24?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr. Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, good night.
Is that there any quasi-judicial?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to Item 10B, Legislative Public Hearings, first of which is Ordinance 5-24. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 5-24, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral, Florida comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from intensive development of Lee County designation to Pine Island Road District land use for property described as a parcel of land situated in the state of Florida, county of Lee, lying south of Pine Island Road in Section 4, Township 44 South, Range 24 East, Lee County, Florida. As more particularly described herein, property located at 2,700 and 2,750 Northeast Pine Island Road, providing severability and an effective date.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Chad.
Okay. All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. For the record, Chad Boyko with the City's Planning Division. This is a privately-initiated future land use map for two parcels on Pine Island Road. It's a little under nine acres in size. The applicant is DD Pine Island LLC. This does, is served by utilities both within the City of Cape Coral, and I believe it would be fully served by City of Cape Coral Utilities. And they're looking to do a future land use map amendment from the Lee County designation to the Pine Island Road District, or PIRD. Just a couple of quick maps for you. The two parcels were recently annexed into the City of Cape Coral last year. This is the second step in the process for them to be able to be developed within the City of Cape Coral. Once this land use is approved, then they would need to file a zoning amendment that would fully allow them to be developed in the City of Cape Coral. The parcels are surrounded to the east, west, and south by properties still within unincorporated Lee County. Parcels to the north are within the City of Cape Coral, and they share that same similar Pine Island Road designation, Pine Island Road District designation that the applicant is seeking for their properties. They would be allowed a maximum FAR of 1.25, which would give them a little under 500,000 square feet of commercial space if they were to develop at the maximum potential. As we all know, properties within Cape Coral rarely develop at that, at that intensity. They would be allowed a maximum density of 25 units per acre, which is 221 units. However, we do have the Pine Island Road cap situation that could limit or eliminate the potential multifamily development that is available on this site. Staff finds that the site is considered to be at a commercial node. It's neither intersection of US 41 and Pine Island Road, and there is the PIRD designation that extends outward from that intersection. Staff finds that it is consistent with six of our commercial siting guidelines, and it is partially consistent with two of our other guidelines. This went to the Plan and Zoning Commission. They recommended approval of this application. And staff also recommends approval of the request to amend the site to the PIRD designation. I'm here for any further questions.
Thank you. I now open public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 5-24, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. For the record, Veronica Martin, representing the property owner and applicant, DD Pine Island LLC. My PowerPoint presentation is almost identical to Chad's, so I'm not going to show that again and bore you. In the interest of time, I just want to reiterate that the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval. This is the second step in the process after annexing this property into the city, which the City Council did approve in August of 2023. And then we'll be applying for a rezoning application to Commercial Corridor. And the applicant does intend to develop this property for commercial use and not for residential. But I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak during public hearing on Ordinance 5-24? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion regarding Ordinance 5-24?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just have one particular question.
Go ahead, sir.
It pertains to this in the Pine Island Road District. You could refresh my memory, Mr. Boyko. Is the, as far as the uses and the prohibited uses, this has frontage on Pine Island Road?
This does have frontage on Pine Island Road, correct.
And we do have something in the code that prohibits storage facility usage in the Pine Island Road District, or is?
We do. I believe there is a setback on Pine Island Road District around 300 to 400 feet. I don't have the exact number, but there is a setback that would eliminate any storage being developed on this. I believe, I don't want to speak for the applicant, but I believe this is being sought as perhaps a medical use to be developed at this site in the future.
I understand. I just, I know we can't necessarily base our decision on that either, but I was just curious as far as the frontage and the limitations to this particular property. Thank you.
Any other council discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr. Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Six ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to Ordinance 6-24. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 6-24, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral, Florida comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from single-family slash multifamily to commercial slash professional land use for property described as lots 9 through 18, Block 5614, Unit 84, Cape Coral subdivision. Property located at 3,303 through 3,307 Northeast 16th Avenue and 3,302 through 3,306 Averil Boulevard, providing severability and an effective date.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Wyatt. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, for the record, Wyatt Daltry, Plan and Team Coordinator. Credentials may be obtained at the City Clerk's office. This is an ordinance, which is privately-initiated future land use map amendment from SM to CP for, which is single-family, multifamily, to commercial-professional for 1.23 acres off of Northeast 16th Avenue, Averil Boulevard. Properties have been single-family, multifamily since 1989. Properties located in northeastern Cape Coral, just south of the Gator Slu, Gator Circle area. It's located in the Urban Services Reserve area, so no utilities are present at this time. Aerial, you can see to the left, existing future land use to the right, future, existing future land use, single-family. It's that off-white color, also located northwest, east, and southwest. There are public facilities properties identified in light blue directly to the south, and some parks and recreation properties located to the southeast. The proposal to amend subject properties commercial-professional as indicated in red here. Background, area to the south was amended to public facilities in 2005 for a future fire station. Averil, at that time, did not connect to Del Prado. That connection was made in 2007. Surrounding area had developed, had been developing sporadically with single-family residential uses in the first couple decades of the 2000s, but that has picked up more rapidly over the past two years. And as I mentioned before, utilities are not available yet to this area. We had analyzed this amendment regarding Policy 1.14 and the future land use element, find it to be a moderately good candidate for non-residential development as the proposed amendment meets four of the eight criteria and partially meets an additional two criteria. To conclude, we find the proposed amendment is consistent with Policy 1.14, the future land use element, which is our commercial siting guidelines, represents an opportunity for small neighborhood-scale commercial. We recommend adoption. We have had some correspondence with the public. I believe I had four phone calls. Most were more informational, what's going to be built on this property in the future. As of this time, we do not know. And with the absence of utilities, we think that day will come in quite some time. I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. I now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 6-24, please come forward.
Good evening, Council. Joe Mazurkis, President of BGM Consulting, here on behalf of the owners and applicants for this future land use map amendment. Staff did an excellent job presenting this case. We believe it clearly lays out the case that this is a good candidate for commercial development in the Gator Circle area, being adjacent to what is going to be a proposed fire station. If you saw that little cul-de-sac in the area, yellow above it, that's City of Cape Coral land. We have been communicating with the City of Cape Coral in an effort to try to purchase that land, to expand this site, so we can move up adjacent to the fire station. City of Cape Coral is presently not willing to sell it because they want to make sure they have enough property for stormwater retention onsite. So once they design that fire station, and if they need that property for retention, we'll probably try to work something to share retention area with them. If they don't, we'll probably continue to work to see if we can buy it from them to expand this site. This will be the first site of non-residence development commercial property in the Gator Circle area. We think it's important to do so. We have no intentions of developing this site right away. We will not develop it until utilities are in place. The reason why we brought this application now is to change the future land use and the future zoning. The surrounding area is only about a third developed. So instead of waiting for the whole area to get 70% developed and then put commercial next door, we want to at least get this identified as future commercial and that, so the rest of the people moving together will know that they are moving close to or adjacent to a future commercial development in this area. Well, I want to also just remind you that staff recommend approval, and the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommend approval. We also respectfully request you vote in favor of this future land use map amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during public hearing on Ordinance 6-24, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion regarding Ordinance 6-24?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr. Carr.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long. Shepherd.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to ordinance seven dash twenty-four. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance seven dash twenty-four, an ordinance amending the city of Cape Coral, Florida comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from public facilities to single-family residential land use for property described as lots eight through eleven and twenty through twenty-three, block six eighty-nine, unit twenty-one, Cape Coral subdivision. Property located at nine sixteen through nine twenty, southeast twenty-second terrace, and nine fifteen through nine nineteen, southeast twenty-third street, providing severability and an effective date.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Wyatt again.
Hello again, Wyatt Daltry, planning division. This is a city-initiated future land use map amendment request from public facilities, a single-family, for just under one acre. Properties are on southeast twenty-second terrace and southeast twenty-third street, just east of Country Club Boulevard, which the map studies will indicate that. Property has been public facilities since nineteen eighty-nine, the establishment of the comprehensive plan. Site is located in, I'll call it, east-central Cape Coral. Aerial shows, the properties are undeveloped, surrounded by nearly completely developed properties, developed with single-family residential for the most part, except for the church is located directly adjacent to the west. The existing future land use map on the right indicates the, the two land uses in this area. Public facilities for basically the church site and single-family for the surrounding areas. The proposal to amend those subject properties to single-family commensurate with...
Is now joining.
With the surrounding area. Some background, this area was owned by the Waters Edge Church, which you saw in the aerials adjacent to this site until two thousand and twenty-two. Property was sold to a single-family home developer. Public facilities lands only permits public, public facility usage such as schools, government offices unless it's located in the Urban Services Reserve area, which this is not. It's in the infill. Utilities are available. As a result, we're going through this land use change to single-family residential. As you saw in the aerial, surrounding area, single-family, has been single-family for decades, will continue to be single-family for decades, so we've fought, we feel this is an appropriate designation. We review the comprehensive plan, review of policy eight point one prohibits expansion to replacement of inconsistent land uses. This would be consistent with the surrounding area, as it's no longer controlled by the church or used for public purposes, changing it to single-family is logical. To conclude, proposed amendment is consistent with the comp plan. Proposed change will depict the upcoming development of single-family uses in this well-established neighborhood. Staff recommends adoption of proposed amendment. I've had some correspondents, two phone calls regarding this, more questions about what this, what a future land use map amendment is. I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. I now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance seven dash twenty-four, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion regarding ordinance seven dash twenty-four?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any counsel discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long. Shepherd.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to ordinance ninety-five dash twenty-three. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance ninety-five dash twenty-three, an ordinance of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, naming the new Cape Coral Fire Department Fire Boat, Marine Seven, in honor of fire engineer driver James Gunter pursuant to the guidelines set forth in chapter two, article nine of the city of Cape Coral, Florida Code of Ordinances, providing severability and an effective date.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Chief Lamb.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Going here. So, naming of the fire boat. So, this is a per-city ordinance. We're looking to honor a fallen firefighter who was recognized as a line-of-duty death and naming this boat in his honor. This is supported by the fire department, the public, and by the Gunter family. Apologize, this is the next one down. Engineer Gunter was a member of our department for a number of years and was recognized for his contributions to the marine team. We find this a fitting benefit to his honor. Stand by for questions.
Thank you. I now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance ninety-five dash twenty-three? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion regarding ordinance ninety-five dash twenty-three?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any counsel discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long. Shepherd.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to ordinance ninety-six dash twenty-three. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance ninety-six dash twenty-three, an ordinance of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, naming the new Cape Coral Fire Training Facility in honor of fire engineer driver Michael Camello Jr. pursuant to the guidelines set forth in chapter two, article nine of the city of Cape Coral, Florida Code of Ordinances, providing severability and an effective date.
Chief Lamb.
Again, Ryan Lamb, Fire Chief, for the record. Again, per-city ordinance, we're looking to name the new fire training facility in honor of Michael Camello Jr., who was recognized as a line-of-duty death. This is fitting into his honor, as he was an instructor at our local academy, an FTO with our agency, worked with a number of individuals in helping them train and learn, and we find this would be fitting to his legacy. Stand by for questions.
Thank you. I now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance ninety-six dash twenty-three? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion regarding ordinance ninety-six dash twenty-three?
Motion to approve.
Any counsel discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long. Shepherd.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Move on to ordinance nine dash twenty-four. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance nine dash twenty-four, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to sell surplus real property described herein pursuant to section two dash one five five of the city of Cape Coral, Florida Code of Ordinances, authorizing and directing the mayor and clerk to execute a special warranty deed conveying the aforementioned surplus real property to Skyline Property Holdings LLC, providing severability and an effective date.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Andrews.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council members, Dawn Andrews with the Public Works Real Estate Division. Ordinance nine dash twenty-four, it's requesting approval of a purchase contract to sell city property located at forty-three oh six Skyline Boulevard. On December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the city council adopted resolution three forty-eight dash twenty-three declaring the property as surplus real property. The city's received a purchase offer from an adjoining landowner. The purchase price exceeds the appraised encumbered market value of the property, and I can stand by for questions.
Thank you. I now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance nine dash twenty-four? Please come forward.
Evening, Mayor and counsel. Joe Mazurkis, President of BJM Consulting, here on behalf of Skyline Property Holdings LLC, the purchaser of this property. I couldn't let this go without saying a little bit more about the actions and the, the multiple-year process. The, the wranglings were very, very diligent and very committed to assembling the property around this parking lot and then negotiating with the city in good faith for the last eighteen-plus months. Like to thank Dawn Andrews, the city manager and the city attorney, for making this a reality. This is going to provide for a first-class development in southwest Cape Coral, and it's going to be a great tax base for the city and takes the liability off of their tax rolls and makes it a tax-producing piece of property for the city. We respectfully request you support ordinance nine dash twenty-four.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak during public hearing? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion regarding ordinance nine dash twenty-four?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any counsel discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long. Shepherd.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to ordinance two dash twenty-four. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance two dash twenty-four, an ordinance amending the city of Cape Coral, Florida Code of Ordinances, chapter two, administration, article four, travel expenses and auto allowances, to repeal and delete sections two dash forty-three through two dash fifty, and to amend section two dash fifty-one, travel policy, regarding the establishment of the city travel policy, providing for severability and an effective date.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mason.
Evening, Mayor and counsel members. Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. Quick, the background on this is the Florida statutes provides for the opportunity for municipalities to adopt its own or approve its own financial or travel policy. And the city has done so, and it did so originally years and years ago, and then we did it through a resolution in two thousand and four. Since that time, we've, it's, we amended the ordinance, I think, in two thousand and eighteen, and we're back to correct and clean up our ordinances and as well as re-adopt the policy pursuant to the Florida statute as well as an audit that was done in two thousand and twenty-one. So, quickly, we originally established in two thousand and five these, the regulations in, in both the ordinance as well as a resolution. And in two, section two fifty-one was subsequently amended that allowed the travel policy to be adopted by an administrative regulation. And then many of the provisions that are in the code, after talking with the city attorney, you know, are duplicative of what's already in the policy. So, there's no reason to have it in two different places. And so, again, in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, our city auditor did an audit on the, on our travel policy. Several findings were laid out, and following that, we needed to do some amendments to the, to the administrative regulation. And in the intervening period, we did that. We streamlined this, this policy. We've also incorporated our current electronic process associated with our travel policy. And at the same time, speaking with the city attorney, we came forward to repeal the ordinance, change one section of the ordinance, two fifty-one, that would provide that this policy will adopt as, as approved by resolution will then cover the, the city council as well as all charter officers. And so, the... And so, what we're recommending that we approve both the ordinance two dash twenty-four as well as the subsequent resolution nine dash twenty-four. With nine dash twenty-four, what was included in the agenda package has been slightly modified, which made one change under policy specifically with regard to the establishing of fixed monthly auto allowances by the city manager. We took out the information that regarded the, the directors as well as the reference to the Code of Ordinances. And that, other than that, the, the language basically stayed the same, and there's no other changes in the policy. And that's it.
Thank you. I now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance two dash twenty-four? Please come forward.
Well, thank you. I'm going to take the time. I'm Jay Higgins again, and I spoke earlier about this ordinance. And again, I was going to take my time here to reiterate some of the things that I brought up. And again, I just want to remind you that we put you in these positions to look after what we have, what we've given you, and that you responsible for the monetary cleanliness of our city, if you will. But, the two thousand dollar under five D two, two thousand dollar airfare costs, I want to know, I want to see debate on this. Two thousand dollar ceiling. Where are you traveling that it's a two thousand dollar round trip? I know that ordinance says you have to travel as economically as possible, but that doesn't mean that you bought the cheapest first-class seat. That is not economical. Check baggage. You know, you shouldn't be going on trips long enough that you have to check a bag, in my opinion. But if you do, you can pay for your own checked bags. You just doubled your salary with the stipend. Stipends can pay for checked baggages as well as seat assignments. For those that didn't take the stipend, I would say you should get this payment back. You didn't take the stipend, you should be recouping your money for this while the other ones can use the money that they took from us. Section five D three C, talking about city employees' cars, city employees going in, and people that aren't city employees going in cars that they don't have a waiver. I was curious what happens when someone gets caught by taking their kid to the doctor in the city car that didn't have a waiver. And does the city employee reimburse the city for any personal travel in that city car? That's not addressed in this ordinance. I think the mill in, in five E, mill and incidental expenses should be stricken, as well as five G four should be stricken as well. I'd like to see debate on this and not just a flat rubber stamp of what you all talk about in private, but let's see some debate. Show me this, show us why you need a two thousand dollar ceiling for a airplane flight. My wife puts people around the country every week, a lot of them. They have a five hundred dollar ceiling. They trade on New York Stock Exchange. They're an international company. Are we an international city? We should maybe adopt some of these policies as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during public hearing on two dash twenty-four? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion regarding ordinance two dash twenty-four?
Motion to approve.
There are second.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, and I will open it up for counsel for discussions. Counsel members, Steinke.
Thank you. I know certainly parameters are looked at for these maximums and whatnot. Could, is, is there, is there some type of reference material where we, where we pull those maximum from? I, I know in, in my tenure here, I've not, I've not gotten an airplane flight. We drive to Tallahassee. We, we drive to the in-state conferences. I've not been to a national conference yet, so I personally have not had to deal with an airplane. But is there, is there some, you know, reference material where you say this is, this is common for, for a municipality to have in its budget?
Okay, so, is it common to have a ceiling in a policy that is a living document that will stretch over a period of time? The answer is yes. It, there may not be one flight that will be taken this year, next year, or even the year after that approaches two thousand dollars. But the cost of travel changes, and so it may end up being that much five years from now. At the same time, it depends on the year, time of year that you're traveling. If you're traveling during the holiday period for a conference or something like that, the cost of travel is, can be double what it might be during the summer months. And it depends on where you're flying in, in, throughout, throughout the United States. I have seen some round-trip fees that have come across, you know, through the concurs system that has approached fifteen hundred dollars, and this is on economic, as economical as possible. We also have sometimes, you know, short-term where, you know, we're, we're traveling and we, we're making these reservations in a very short window of time, not being done six months in advance. It's where you're going to get much better flight or prices if you're making these well in advance as opposed to, you know, that we need to travel now as opposed to in the future. Part of this travel is, is when our police officers need to travel across the country for various purposes, you know, to retrieve a prisoner. All of that is included as part of this policy. So, yes, I would say the two thousand dollars is a reasonable, and yes, we did evaluate the, the pricing associated with this. But again, it is a living document. It is not something that we intend to come back and, and amend on an annual basis because of, you know, changing in this particular pricing. We would come back when we actually need to, and we're seeing that, you know, flight costs are, are going to start exceeding this number on a regular basis.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, we have a motion, a second on the floor. Please call the roll.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd. Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to resolution nine dash twenty-four. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution nine dash twenty-four, a resolution of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, establishing a city travel policy and incorporating the travel policy into the city's administrative regulations, providing an effective date.
Mr. Mason.
No presentation other than to reiterate what I just talked about as far as the previous presentation is concerned.
Okay, I now open up public input. Anyone wishing to speak on resolution nine dash twenty-four? Please come forward. Seeing none, public input is now closed. Is there a motion regarding resolution nine dash twenty-four?
Motion to approve.
Any counsel discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item ten C is introductions. Madam City Clerk, first one is resolution fifty dash twenty-four. Please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Resolution fifty dash twenty-four, a resolution of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the Cobalt Canal right-of-way adjacent to lots one and two, block one forty-six, Cape Coral, unit four, part two. Property located at fifty-three oh two Cobalt Court, providing an effective date. The public hearing will be February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Any discussion by staff or counsel? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance ten dash twenty-four. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance ten dash twenty-four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Coral, Florida, authorizing and directing the city manager or their designee to enter into a permissive use agreement with the United States Army Reserve, Three Hundred Sixty-Fifth Engineer Company, for a portion of property owned by the city of Cape Coral, Florida, as described herein. Property located at twenty-nine twenty Burnt Store Road North, together with adjoining tracts of land to the south, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Any discussion by staff or counsel? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance eleven dash twenty-four. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance eleven-24, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, approving an agreement for the 2023-2024 hurricane legislative appropriation program, the hurricane program, between the City of Cape Coral, Florida and the State of Florida, Division of Emergency Management, in order to provide funding for hurricane repairs and recovery due to Hurricane Ian and Hurricane Nicole, authorizing the city manager or their designee to execute the agreement and any related documents, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be February 21st, 2024.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to item eleven, Reports. Councilmember Welsh, report.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the, hold on a second here, Concert in the Park. It was pretty well-attended. The food trucks were nice. The band, as always, performed well. I look forward to, I believe there's going to be, with the Cape Coral Historical Museum coming up soon, like a Brew Fest in Cultural Park. I'm glad that that park is now open and done and able to be used for city events. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carr, report.
No report tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayden.
Thanks, Mayor. First, I wanted to congratulate our youth council. For the second time in three years, they have been named one of three state champions for their video essay on Cape Coral. So I commend them for their hard work on this project. I would encourage my colleagues to go to Florida League of Cities Youth Council site and watch the video on the other two winners. It's impressive and continues their hard work that they do each year, each month in the City of Cape Coral. And I will also encourage the public, should they want to see these tremendous students in action, they have a meeting on Friday at 3:00 PM in this room. And one of the things that they will be discussing will be agenda items for the upcoming third joint city council, youth council meeting. So if you have the time and want to see some impressive minds at work, please come and pay them a visit. Secondly, Mr. City Manager, to make sure I read the email correctly, the light at Del Prado Extension and De Novera Parkway will be operational by next week. Is that correct?
Yes, it is intended to be in flash mode, I believe, on the 10th through the 12th, and then in full operation on the 12th.
Okay, and we know that, you know, the past several years include a lot of debate, controversy, traffic accidents at the intersection. So I think it's welcome news that that light's going to be operational next week.
Thank you. Councilmember Long, report.
No report, ma'am.
Councilmember Shepherd. Councilmember Steinke.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. First, I don't believe either one are still in the room right now, but I'd wanted to share my appreciation for the two of our citizens that did acknowledge some good works that are done by the city and the condition that the city is in today versus 20, 30, 40, 50 years ago. So I thank them for their courage of acknowledging all of the work that's done and the magnitude of the work that's required for a city of our size in the growth stages that we are in. I, two days after our last meeting, I got a new right knee. So I wasn't able to do as much as I would have liked to have done over the last couple of weeks, but I did maintain my responsibilities as council, and I appreciate the city manager's office for allowing me to participate in our weekly meeting remotely for the first meeting after the surgery was conducted, and then for putting up with me in my physical therapy attire in the one that we had just yesterday. So that's it. I will be attending the Lee County Tourist Development Council that I'm a part of tomorrow. Also, thanks to city staff for allowing me to ride with them during this time that I'm not able to drive a car. So, thank you, and that's it.
Thank you. I attended on January 25th, the Lee County Recovery Task Force meeting. We thought that was going to be the last meeting. We were going to approve the plan, but we have another meeting coming up here, I believe, the end of the month, which will probably be the last meeting for the Lee County Recovery Task Force. We should vote on a plan and adopt a plan, you know, a regional approach as a result of Hurricane Ian, as far as our needs throughout the region. Also, on January 27th, I attended the Cape Coral Quanah's Kids Fest, was a guest speaker, and welcomed everyone and got that particular function started. Another great organization and a function for our community and the kids in our neighborhoods and throughout the city. Also, on January 31st, I participated in the Florida League of Cities Board of Directors, in the Florida League of Mayor's Board of Directors meetings during the Legislative Action Days up in Tallahassee. Also, on February 1st, I was a guest speaker at the New Residents Club. That was very well-attended. Also, I attended on February 2nd and issued a proclamation for the Annual Graham Al Day. Also, this morning, Film Pet of the Month, attended the NPO Executive Committee meeting as well. And one last thing that I wanted to mention, I was a member of the Florida League of Cities, had reached out to me and asked if I would be interested in submitting as a candidate for the Florida Minesables Insurance Trust that we are a member here of in Cape Coral. They asked if I would be interested in being on a board. They are accepting applications up until, I believe, sometime in March. So I wanted to ask to make sure that council didn't have any issues with me applying to that board since we are a member. But members, there are several members on that Board of Trustees that their cities do do business with FMIT. So I just want to make sure that no one on council had an issue with that. If not, I'll go ahead and submit as a possible candidate. I believe there's two openings on that particular board, and sometime in the future they'll make that decision. Other than that, I do not have anything else. Mr. City Attorney, you have any report?
No, nothing at this point in time.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have four announcements, but first I would like to take a couple of minutes to let you all know that effective this past Monday, our finance director, Mr. Mason, concluded his time as interim HR Director. We have onboarded a new HR Director, Nancy Deutsch, and I'm going to give her an opportunity to introduce herself to you all for a few minutes. And I'm just hoping she's still back there after the citizens' input.
I was thinking the same thing. I'm surprised she's still here, but welcome.
A friendly face, a friendly face for a change. Good afternoon. I'm Nancy Deutsch. I'm the new HR Director for the city. I've recently relocated here from New Hampshire for this opportunity. I'm very excited about this opportunity. I'm sorry if I brought a little cold weather with me when I relocated. Hopefully, that will resolve soon. But so far, even though it's just day three, I've found the city to be very professional, very warm and welcoming. I'm really looking forward to my tenure here and to support the city manager and the rest of my colleagues here in furthering the mission of the city and look forward to working with you all as well. Thank you for the opportunity.
And thank you, you know, for choosing Cape Coral, and thank you for your service to not only the city but our community.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And I just have a couple of announcements, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
We're hosting a planting of mangroves at the Coral Point Canal Saturday, February 10th at 9:00 AM. Residents are asked to volunteer to sign up through the Keep Lee County Beautiful, and it is a partnership with Lee County 2020. That is going to be February 10th at 9:00 AM at 2122 Coral Point Drive. We also will be hosting our second Bike Night this Saturday, February 10th, from 5:00 to 10:00 PM, and that'll be on Southeast 47 Terrace. We have a public input meeting on the design of future trails at Yellow Fever Creek Park on Tuesday, February 13th, from 10:00 to 11:00 AM. This meeting will be held at Rotary Park Environmental Center at 5505 Rose Garden Road. We're seeking a grant for up to $400,000 from FDEP on trails at the Yellow Fever Creek, and we need to hold a public input session on what type of trails where in order to be successful in submitting a grant application. So that is this upcoming Tuesday, February 13th, from 10:00 to 11:00 at Rotary Park. And then lastly, for the 32nd year in a row, Cape Coral has achieved the designation of Tree City USA, which is awarded by the USA Arbor Day Foundation. Thirty-second year in a row for Tree City USA.
Is that all you have?
That's all I have. I have no more reports. There was one speaker in public input that made a comment. I just wanted to clarify, as I've done over the past couple of weeks. Mr. David Kalish said that the city manager, the city attorney, and the city council devised a plan for the stipend. That is inaccurate, and I'm going to leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Item 13, time and place of future meeting. We have a committee at the Hall scheduled for Wednesday, February 14th, 2024, 9:00 AM in council chambers. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.